Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And we're scheduled tonight at 6:30 to meet with Chief Landry and Captain Torino. Discuss the happenings over at the fire station. And then at 7:00 we will, done or not, we'll recess and open our 7 o'clock meeting and then go back into this one if we're not going to. Chief Landry, you want to?
Good evening. I do have a lot of information I'd like to present to the Board of Selectmen on both the police and fireside. So I'm going to go as quickly as I can.
Okay.
If you need to ask a question, please interrupt me rather than wait until the end because I'll just lose my thought process.
Okay.
I'll address the police department first because they're the easier of the two departments.
Okay.
Currently, we are fully staffed. We have four full-time police officers and six part-time police officers. I do expect one of my senior part-time officers to receive a full-time job in the very near future. So I'll be looking for one additional part-time officer, but no more than six.
Okay.
So we have a lot of interest in that one job. I'm really not taking any applications because I have an abundance of applications. So as far as manpower goes, we're going very well. Now the challenges of the police department, the MPTC, the Municipal Police Training Committee, has new standards now that requiring by statute 32 hours of in-service training per police officer. And they've set the standards and the guidelines as to what they have to learn. So obviously, that's an impact on my budget because now you're suddenly speaking 32 hours of overtime for full-time officers. You talk about more part-time officers receiving compensation for attending these classes. So we're going to try to work at the best we can and stay within the budget. But this is a new mandate. It's 32 hours. We do have an aggressive training program. We take advantage of free training opportunities from MIA, from other people who are willing to teach for free. But there are core classes that we have to take. So those identified by the state, we can't work around those. But hopefully, we'll be all set for that. Overall, the police department, similar to last year and the other previous six or seven years, are doing very well. Equipment-wise, when we look at our vehicles, we have a very aggressive maintenance program. We rotate our vehicles so there's no vehicle being operated more than eight hours per day. That maintains the longevity of all the vehicles in the fleet. So we actually get more longevity out of each vehicle, maybe four, five, six years if everything goes well. So at this point in time, there is no need for a new cruiser. Like I mentioned previously, every 18 months is where we should be looking to replace the next vehicle. So I'm thinking the last half of 2014, we'll probably be looking for a new vehicle.
Okay.
The vehicle with the most miles at that time will have approximately 120,000 miles on it. At that point, it doesn't make sense to throw away money to repair a vehicle that's going to be six years, five, six years old with over 120,000 miles.
So that would be in fiscal year 15 budget?
Yes. Okay. Currently in the cruisers, we had laptops that were at seven years old purchased by the former acting chief Healy. Those computers have started to break, increasing my IT support. So I just took advantage of some extra funds that we found in the budget. Hopefully, we won't need them at the end of the year. We did purchase refurbished laptops that have an extended warranty for half the cost. So rather than paying $3,000 per computer, we paid $1,500 and we received the extra three-year warranty. It makes it a very good buy for the computers. And I expect to get between four and five years out of those particular cruisers.
Can I ask where you found those funds?
Well, we have-
What line item?
Yeah, we have a couple of line items. We have the IT line item. That's the one we used. The only danger of spending money early in the year-
Yeah.
-is when I run out at the end of the year. Hopefully, we've never done that. So I think I'm usually prudent. I don't like to spend till the end. But in this particular case, we need them now, so I spent the money now. That item, I usually purchase those type of items at the end of the year. But in this particular case, we had to purchase them in the beginning of the year. So come May and June, hopefully, we'll have the funds to keep going and not be short.
Okay.
As far as the IT, my next topic is we'll go to the building first, the police department as a whole, the building. It is sufficient. There's no immediate needs within that building. Everything works. Heating system, new roof, windows are fairly new. Everything is generally in great condition, so there's no need to think we're going to spend a lot of money on the building anytime soon. So the building's in pretty good shape. Equipment-wise, I mentioned the laptops and the cruisers, but there is a need for new desktop computers in the station. And the reason why I have to address that, the computers that we currently have, I believe they're five to seven years old. They probably only have 520 megabytes of RAM. They're one gigabyte hard drive space. They're very old, outdated. They continuously break because they're so old, which is causing Helen to have her IT line item go through the roof. Because when they break, you know, I have to call Worldband, get these units fixed. So what I like to do, what I'm going to do is try to squeeze in money we don't have and try to purchase one desktop computer this year and then one the following year. You want to try to alternate buying them so they don't all crash at once.
Yep.
So we do have three. One is really, should be replaced now, so we're going to try to figure out how that works. We just had it repaired by Worldband. Well, it cost me $300 to fix it in the service time. I could have purchased a new desktop for probably $500.
Yep.
So I don't believe in throwing away money. So it comes a point in time when you have to replace equipment, and this is one. We have stretched those computers to the limit. It's like working on a very old vehicle. Bottom line, it's time to replace them. We probably have more storage and RAM speed than any portable unit that we have sitting in front of me. So those have to be replaced. But the longevity has been great, but now it's just starting to cost me more money. We still maintain our aggressive position looking for grants. Trish and I, we search the web on a weekly basis trying to find grants to benefit the town and the police department. On the whole, there are not that many police department grants. There's more fire grants right now. Everything goes in a cycle. You really can't find too many police grants. But when I speak about the fire department, we can certainly find more fire grants.
Okay.
We're currently in the process of rewriting all our policies and procedures. That's something I believe should be done every two to three years. This will be the third time I present them to the Board of Selectmen for review.
Yep.
They're going to be tweaked and changed, so I'd really appreciate if you read them.
Okay.
And give me your input before you sign off on them because you're going to start seeing them relatively soon. I'll probably give Helen maybe five to seven policies a week because you don't want them all at once.
Right.
I don't think you're going to read 70 policies. So I'll give them to you in increments and you can get them done. We did form a partnership with the seniors, whereas we hold our LTC classes in the senior citizens complex, which is a great opportunity for them to generate more money. We charge $75 per class. The instructor gives back $25 per student to the seniors. So I think we've generated well over $1,000, which they graciously accepted. So that's the money we've generated with them. Since they eliminated the community depletion grant, those type of programs are difficult because everything's money.
Yep.
And we no longer have the money to sponsor a lot of the things we did in the past. An example would be Halloween party. That would generally cost me six, seven, $800. We don't have that money any longer and neither do other communities unless they're a wealthy community and they find it in their budget.
Yes.
So some of those programs temporarily have been placed on the wayside until we find more money. I send Trish regularly to any training program I can find regarding grant writing, which is not only a benefit to police and fire, it could be a benefit to the town of Millville as well. I scheduled her one. I think she's going to be going in the next couple of weeks to one in Providence. So we're trying to stay on top of that. That's where you get the latest and best news regarding grants.
Okay.
So overall, just to recap, I think the police department is, from personnel to equipment to the facility, is doing very well. I think over the years, we've fine-tuned what we do in the police department. So it's fairly well off right now. We have educated, experienced people. So overall, I'm very pleased with their production and the quality of service to the town. So if you have any questions regarding the police, that would be it. The next issue would be the fire department. And I believe the fire department, for a lot of reasons, is probably more complex and more challenging than the police department in whole. And there's a lot of reasons for that. It's because, simply because we operate with both a full-time police department, consists of two full-time firemen, and an on-call department as well. Fortunately, the on-call interest simply isn't there as much as probably it was years past. And I can think that's part of the requirement where on-call people have to be trained through Fire One and Two through the Fire Academy.
Ah-huh.
And the bottom line is, we don't offer much. We certainly pay for the person to go. We pay for the class. But when they graduate, they don't make that much money working for the town. They're only paid when they're a town. So it's a big commitment. It's a large commitment for anybody to commit that type of, you know, that much time to go to this academy. So a lot of people simply can't do it. So the goal is to attract as many viable candidates as we can. Hopefully, they'll go to Fire One and Two to make them employable by the town. The reason why I mandate Fire One and Two is simply a liability reason. In this type of society, everyone has an attorney's phone number in their back pocket. So God forbid if someone's not fully trained and we send them into a situation and they're hurt, our insurance policy probably won't cover the damages. So I will not place this town in that position. So we're going to require Fire One and Two like all of the other surrounding communities do.
Okay.
They all require Fire One and Two. And that's our standard. But the difficulty is attracting people willing to go. Overall, it's been fine. We do have a pretty good response, both on the on-call and certainly the full time is on their days off. So it's been working out pretty well. On EMS side, again, once again, challenging. We're a basic level EMS service. Attracting basic EMTs to the town of Millville is difficult because we don't pay a lot of money. And they stay here for 10, 12-hour shifts for $50. And a lot of them stay, a lot of them leave. Overall, I think we really increased our coverage to probably in the 90 percentile of shifts being filled, other than the last couple of months when we had four people out on injury, their own injuries. So when you lose four EMTs, you lose a lot of people. So they're all back, so I expect the schedule to be near complete, maybe around 95, 96 percent-
Okay.
...of shifts being filled. The overall goal, I think from the former chief, and myself, would go to a paramedic license someday. But the more I look at that, the feasibility of trying to accomplish that task is very, very difficult to do. From the funding part to the personnel part, the number of runs that we have, it's almost an impossible task. Not to say that we're not trying and looking that way. It's very difficult to try to get to that level.
Right.
But overall, the EMS program does work. The staff's pretty well. Everyone's a professional. And I've received very few complaints over the years regarding the service. Sometimes timeliness is an issue. It takes us a little while to get there on a weekend. If somebody's on-call, they have to respond from their home or mutual aid. It takes a little longer than if we're working during business day. So you have to understand that. Once again, that's no different than other communities. We do have, and I mentioned in the past, a very aggressive training program. And this is a very, very difficult subject because I believe in training. I believe training should be mandated. So we do have nine training sessions per year. And so the six are mandatory?
Six are mandatory.
Six are mandatory out of nine. And we generally offer them every month, every month, but the two seven months. So there's no excuse not to make a mandatory training. And we offer the training two or three times a month. The bottom line is, if you don't train, you don't work for me. Once again, it's another liability-
Yep.
-that I believe in. And we currently have some on-call members of the department that will not meet the requirement to train. So January 1st, I will collect their gear. If they don't train, they don't work. And that's just a, places us in a precarious situation if something happens. They may tell you they're loyal to the town, but let something happen to them when they're fighting fire, and loyalty is no longer part of the equation. Overall, though, it's a very good training program. Steve and Roy, they administer the program. It's very good. Equipment-wise, I'm very aggressive with equipment as well. All of our equipment's been certified, inspected. It's 100% ready to go. We just had one engine require a new gas tank, new springs. They've all been serviced. They're all 100%. That's the only way I'll operate a truck when it comes to public safety. So we have spent a little bit of money within our budget to accomplish all these tasks. Bottom line is, big truck, big expense.
Ah-huh.
When you fix an engine, it's not a $39 oil change. It's hundreds of dollars. But that's the only way I'll run that department, if we stay on top of all the equipment. And we do. So we're doing very well with all the vehicles, including the rescue. Everything's in great shape. Accountability is another standard we must maintain. All of our training documents, our vehicle information, everything we do is stored now into IMC. We just recently purchased a new server that's state-of-the-art. It's a virtual TALL computer. It's $8,000, a compliment of a grant we wrote on the fireside. So that server is now serving both the fire department and the police department. So that's a great tool for both departments. If any management company ever walked into the town of Millville and conducted any type of audit on the fire department, similar to what they just did in Sturridge, we receive flying colors because we're right on top of training, we're right on top of records. We're both in the, even on the fireside, Steve is chairman of the committee. We're rewriting all of their policies and procedures. I don't know the last time that was done. I have no idea. So all the policies and procedures are being rewritten on the fireside. So as soon as Steve is with them, knows piecemeal, five at a time, and that's how that's going to go. In addition to equipment, we did receive all the turnout gear that we purchased through a grant, about $20,000 worth about two weeks ago.
Yes.
Three weeks ago. That's been distributed. We collected all of the damaged equipment. Some of it we've kept. It's going to be recirculated for new people coming on or for training needs. Some will be destroyed and thrown away because of no value. The SCBA's, the breathing apparatus, I think it's about $120,000 we wrote that particular grant for, for that amount of money. I expect those to arrive in November, their vols.
Yes. Yeah, they've been ordered.
And that's a windfall for this town because without that grant, the SCBA's we had are no longer certified, they need to buy it. So thank you, US government, because we would have been a little bit of a jam trying to find that kind of money.
Okay.
We did install a new light pole. I think I mentioned that a few months ago. And part of the line item we had for radio repairs and upgrades that we've been working on for the last year is near complete. We've installed a lot of radios into the vehicles. The tower has been installed. I'd like to thank Steve and Roy and other members of the fire department and myself. We built the shed that will contain all of the radio equipment. It's right near the tower.
Yep.
So I mean, to go out and build, to have the opportunity to go take a look at it, it's the first-class, secure builder. And we just did it with labor.
All you need is an antenna. All you need is the antenna.
All we need is the antenna, and I believe that's going to be within the next couple of weeks.
Some of it has come in, and we're waiting for two more. And then hopefully, next week, we're going to start erecting the antennas on top of the pole.
Excellent. So that's going to work out well. So we should be online in two or three weeks. Hopefully, on budget. I know we requested somewhere around $14,000 when the project first began. I've had a couple of ups and downs, so hopefully, we're right on target for that amount of money. In addition to equipment, we just received a new lighting tower, which is a great piece of equipment. I did have to have to show some people. Along with the lighting tower, we received a new generator, state-of-the-art generator, which I gave to Steve and the fire department. We received some other grants, first aid kits, some blankets, all things that we really need. So that was all free of the government once again. But, you know, once again, we did our due diligence by filing the correct paperwork and obtaining those items. So now, we spoke about the vehicles, the equipment, the personnel. Now I'd like to get into Fire Station One. I did install, beginning of the season or the end of last season, an electric water tank, tried to cut down on the oil cost. Station One, so the furnace doesn't run all summer long. So we did that, and hopefully, we saved some oil. Rear parking lot, which we paved last year, works very well. We park all our vehicles behind the building with no issue whatsoever. However, the building itself is really inefficient. It cost me, it cost the town. The knob I like to heat that building is blocked with no insulation whatsoever. It just goes out.
Yep.
So in addition to that, there's really no space to expand inside that building. As part of that grant, I just spoke about a couple of minutes ago, we're applying for a new filling station to fill the air bottles. Currently, we don't have one. It's sort of a $25,000 acquisition. And currently, we have to move another neighboring department. We're going to have our own, and we're going to need a place to install that type of apparatus. Currently, Station One just doesn't work. My biggest issue now is with Station Two. Station Two has been very vocal the last couple of weeks, and I'll continue to be vocal. It's a reoccurring cost that is, in my opinion, absolutely foolish to pay. With expenses, we're probably around $25,000, $26,000 for a three-year lease. We occupy maybe three-fifths of the building, a little less than that. I tried to negotiate a prorated agreement with the owner. He was adamant, absolutely not. He's paid the entire bill for the insurance or not. So we paid the insurance for the next three years in the building, even though we only occupy less than half of that bill than I think it is.
Chief, can you itemize where you came up with that number?
Yeah, it's, Helen, what was the, what was the final cost on the insurance?
Um, the final lease for the three years?
What was what?
Um-
Twenty-
Five a year? Five, actually closer to 70 years, so maybe 21?
Yeah, 21,000 plus, plus I heat it and I supply electric to it. And the other thing, the other thing that really is a little bit disheartening is, we have no control over that building.
Just with the way-
Right. And that is, and I'll be very vocal right on the air right now, that is not a fire station. It is a garage that rerent for two vehicles to occupy. We have no control over the building. What we can do is very limited. It's basically showing up, leaving, and coming back.
So you pay for the oil?
On my side.
You pay for the gas?
On my side.
I mean-
Electric on my side.
Okay. Plus the rent?
Right.
Plus the insurance?
Right.
You've got to be over 25.
I don't know exactly what it is, but somewhere in that. I don't want to overestimate, but I estimate conservatively $25,000. And that's a reoccurring cost. It doesn't go away. So you simply pay that money, and at the end of the day, you get nothing for it. And that will lead me to the latter part of our presentation. So, you know, I think we seriously have to take a look at that. You know, it's not like 20 years ago when the bill was either free, when you paid $300 per year, the stories I've heard. Now it's caught up to the times. It's probably ahead of the times. So I'll come back to that. Let's speak about the pumping station right now. I just had to have the pump rebuilt. And there's a lot of issues with that. You've got to realize, we draft out of a pond, a filthy pond, that's full of debris, full of everything you can imagine that we suck up. And we just sucked up a rock into the impeller for one of the fire engines. It cost us, cost the town money to fix that impeller. Like I said, the pump just died. We just have to have the pump repaired. I haven't received the bill yet to fix that pump. I'm going to guesstimate about $2,000 to $3,000 to have pump to be fixed. We ruptured a water line a few months ago. We had to replace the water line and hydrant. There are other fire hydrants in town that are very old, 40, 50 years old.
Some, yes.
That we have a replacement plan. We're trying to do one a year to catch up. And we replace like two, and this year, we replace the third and one. But we should also be thinking about extending what we currently have down the road, maybe one new fire hydrant in addition to what we have, including the linear feet of 500 feet down the road until we have the entire town covered. And that's a real shortfall when it comes to fire, firefighting abilities in town. You have no water. You have no way to fight a fire. Fortunately, the pump has been repaired and everything's working fine now. But in the future, three-year, five-year plan, we should address the needs of the water suppression system in town. So that's, you know, if we win the lottery or something happens, that would be, that'd be a great way to start. So now, we've addressed personnel. We've addressed the buildings, management. The last thing I'd like to address is the future of the department. I'm currently, when you speak about ambulance receipts, that's what funded the department for many years. We had that money in the ambulance receipt line item to buy these trucks, buy the rescue. Unfortunately, that's no longer the case. We decided a few years ago to take half of that money, deposit that money into the general fund, and the other half would stay somewhat in the public safety line item, if you want to call it that. Fortunately, that will not keep up with the needs of the fire department. When you speak about buying one engine for $300,000 or one ambulance for $150,000, you're not going to generate that much money. So we really have to think about creating a capital line item for a future purchase of an engine or an ambulance or whatever we have to purchase. But one way to do that is to start saving money in other areas. So my three- or five-year plan is, how do we do that and be more effective than what we are, provide a better service? And that's to consolidate the fire operation into one building. When you look at the overall size of Millville, it's five square miles. To have two buildings in town is really foolish. There's no need for that. This isn't the 1920s when you had one tanker that couldn't go up a hill. If you have one fire station directly in the middle of the town, it's very effective. It's efficient, and that's the direction we should be going in. So for the last couple of months, I've been putting some things together, and I'd like to show you what we've had. I've identified, I took a look at all the vacant properties in the town that we own and identified the best possible location for the fire department. And there is one perfect location in this town that we should seriously consider building a new fire station. And/or at least maintaining that property for a municipal project someday. And that's the piece of land that sits on Main Street between Main and Chestnut Hill on the side of the cemetery. It's a large lot, certainly large enough to accommodate a fire station or any other type of municipal building. So Steve, if you could put up Phase One. A Phase One, if you take a good look at it, you can see where I identified the fire station. That would just be the garage that would replace Station Two. And as you see, would be a drive-in and drive-out fire station. Currently, the two buildings we have require the operators to back in, which is a flaw. New departments are not built like that. It's certainly a hazard when you have to back in from Main Street 122 into the fire station. It's very difficult for anyone to drive one of those trucks backwards. The new building would be, you could drive in or drive out, either Chestnut Hill Road or Main Street. That's the easiest way to identify that building. You can see, there's the lot. Chestnut Hill is identified, Main Street's identified.
The cemetery would be over here, on this side here.
Okay. That would be the first phase. And to accomplish that task, I would either recommend a bond or a debt exclusion. And the money to pay that bond or that debt exclusion, I would identify from the lease that we've been paying and maybe a certain section of the ambulance receipts. So realistically, if we do it correctly, there should be no impact whatsoever on taxes. There should be no direct cost to the town other than what we're paying now.
What is your frontage there on Main Street? I see one-
It's 220 feet.
220?
Yeah. I can give you, it's like 220.
No, that's fine.
So it's got sufficient width-
Wrap my head around.
-because that building is 40 by 60. So 40- So it's got sufficient width, because that building is 40 by 60, so 40 in width, 60 in depth, enough to house two engines in that building, and drive in and drive out. So it hits a homerun, generally pays for itself, 'cause you're no longer paying this lease. So, that would be Phase One. Phase Two, if we can find some grant money, if we can find additional money, or when that lease is, or when that bond is paid, Phase Two would be to add the fire station, the center, and the other garage on the other side. That would be your complete fire station. And along with that, if you take a look, there would be sufficient parking, and it'd also be a shared complex with the Highway Department, because the Highway Department, they need space like we need space. We continue to accumulate equipment. We've got a trailer, lighting tower, sign tower, we have no way to place this equipment. We had a $7,000 plow stolen, 'cause we couldn't babysit that plow, because we didn't have adequate visibility, we didn't have an adequate facility. This would accomplish the needs of fire and highway in the top left-hand corner, and that would be the vision we would go with. And the next rendition would be, the final product, it's just a rough draft that we just put together with the Fire Department inside the station. It looks similar to that, without the shrubs and the parking lot and the design. Cost, I'm estimating for the first Phase One, no more than $80,000. So if you do the math, within 10 years, it's paid for itself, and we have control, and we have a facility that we can do multiple things with. Now, we can sit here and debate this all day long, and half the things I'm saying are gonna forget, half the people that are watching are gonna forget what I'm saying. So what I did to ease the confusion is to prepare a very simple slot analysis. It's a tool used in management to determine if you're making the right decision or the best decision for what you wanna do. Similar to a gap analysis, and it's, it's the strengths and weaknesses, the opportunities and the threats. And you identify them, you speak about each one, then at the end, collectively, you should make a determination if it's a viable option. And when you really analyze what we've done, it is. For anyone to say, it doesn't make sense, it doesn't work, I will debate that all night long, 'cause I've spent a lot of time working on this, for the good or the bad. You look at the financial savings, we go over really quickly, the financial savings is simply the reoccurring cost of a lease.
Yep.
That's plain and simple. Central location, it's centrally located, it's gonna serve the south and the north side of the town. Consolidation, two into one. Future growth for the Highway Department, Police Department, or Municipal Government is there. Security, obviously the example is the plow, and other items that disappear from this town, because we don't have a locked facility, we have no way to monitor anything that goes on in this town. That's a great location that we, as a Police Department, can monitor, it's wide open, it works. Shared facility, like I just mentioned, energy efficient. The bottom line is, at $3.80 a gallon for oil, without more, we can't afford to be letting our heat go through the window, and that's why I addressed the efficiency of the building. When you look at weaknesses, people are gonna say, what's the weaknesses? Well, the cost, you have to buy it, you have to build it. So that's gonna be immediate weakness, if you're really thinking of what it's all about. Funding, how are we gonna do that? I think I identified the two funding mechanisms that will work. Tax dollars, someone's gonna say, well, you could've sold that piece of land and generated some tax dollars, but that does not outweigh the good of the project, or the good of the town. Maintenance...
Right now, we're spending a lot of money, because the facility we have now, both facilities, one is non-insulated, and one is insulated very poorly. So we'll be able to encompass some of that money by saving on the oil that we're spending, and the electricity as well.
Now, maintenance to me isn't really a weakness, but I put it up there, someone's gonna say, oh, brand-new facility, more repairs, more maintenance, oh, it's just the opposite. It'll be a new building, it's not gonna need as much maintenance, it's like buying a new car, for a period of time, you don't have to throw a lot of money into it. So that's why it's really not a weakness, it's an investment, in my opinion. Opportunity, you look at economic savings in the future, if you continue to pay a lease over time, whatever you really saved, you've given away, it's like paying a mortgage for 30 years, at the end of the 30 years, you still don't own your home. Well, if anyone wants to invest in that type of growth, you know, let me know, and we can speak after class. But that's not... Flexibility, to do many things with this site, I just mentioned that, some of these are redundant, but you speak about Highway, Parks and Rec, we have a location that we can do many things with. Storage, safety, security, and morale. Morale, believe it or not, is a pretty good issue I'd like to address, because having one fire station where people can respond to from one location and set up properly is the way you wanna go, 'cause Station Two is certainly not that.
Besides that, you have a great clean new facility to re-energize some of the personnel, and it all works out in the long run.
And threat to the project would obviously be cost, people are gonna say, wow, you know, it's gonna cost us all this money, but when they really take a look at the way we presented it, it's really not. Perception, and that's the biggest thing I wanna mention. Speak to some people who live up at Chestnut Hill Road, oh my God, we're losing our fire station. Please, you're not losing the fire station, you're losing the garage that houses two trucks. If you look at the stats, and you analyze the runs on the north side of town, you're gonna see, most of the time, we respond from Station One before Station Two ever even gets there. And we can show that analytically with our runs, or what we've done. So, that's a myth, it's a true myth. Environmental, someone said to me the other day, oh, you can't build there, it's full of oil. Oh my God, I haven't heard that, and I've never seen any evidence of that, but so what? We can have a test it if there is, EPA offers plenty of grants for mediation. So that shouldn't be a threat. To me, it's another, from a detractor saying, oh no, you can't, or if it's contamination, why would anyone be interested in the project?
Right.
Doesn't make sense. You're interested in it, don't buy it, 'cause it could be contamination, but we're interested in it. Hypocrisy, I mean, that doesn't even make sense. Public support, it's a threat, but I think if people really understand what we're speaking about tonight, and we go into it more in depth, and maybe a public meeting or session, they would really understand what we're aiming at. So if you wanna identify the future growth of this town, for the future generations, that is the way to go. If you wanna be complacent and give away money, we keep a status quo, it doesn't matter to me. But certainly, I don't wanna make this with anyone in town argumentative, it's what the town wants. If the town wants to go in this direction, great, we can get it done. If they don't want to, we just move on to another project.
I think it personally does matter to you, 'cause you wouldn't be sitting here doing what you're doing.
Well, you know what, kids...
'Cause you're trying to make this town better, so I can't say that.
You know what, I can't move this town, we invest a lot of time and effort into this town to make it better, and to fall back doesn't make sense.
Exactly.
This town, you may think it's small, and there's no growth, but there is a lot of growth potential. Just go up Chestnut Hill Road, or up Quaker Street, this town has the opportunity to add a lot of homes in this community, and it's going to happen through building. So we're gonna grow. So if we don't grow with it, we're gonna fall behind. So that's basically the end of my, I'm gonna run out of time, my presentation for that building, but I wanted to add it to this presentation, because it's a plan that we should be moving forward with. So if anyone has any quick questions, 'cause we're meeting, it's supposed to stop, we can certainly entertain them.
I have a list.
Go ahead, make the answers for everyone.
And this is just some general discussion, or thoughts to think about for future. And I've said this before, but I think that all our town departments need to see the parcels of lists that we have. I think through our capital planning, that they need to develop their five, 10, 20-year plan, in order to look at all those parcels and how we're gonna use them, and that may be a topic for Saturday. I had a question about funding, but you didn't answer that, it was prior to your presentation, I wrote these. As far as energy efficiency, I know our green energy people are working on that grant, and regardless of what happens on that parcel, that those stations may be able to benefit from some of that program, to reduce costs of heat, electricity...
The energy surveys don't indicate significant savings there, because of...
Because of the, it won't reduce by 20%? So it's not our biggest, okay. All right, I just wrote that afterwards when I heard energy efficient, I didn't know how effective we could be. And also, I think that our group here, our board, needs to think about this building. This building houses the most, houses all of our business, houses most of our employees, we've got bats in the belfries, we've got mold in the basement, we have no plan for this building, and I think we need to address that. How is this building gonna be used? What is the future of this building, five, 10, and 20 years? Would that parcel be over there, be good as maybe two days in a municipal annex?
Right.
That may be the...
That would be the reason right now, we shouldn't let anybody even go near that piece of property in the town, just to make sure. And like you say, Jennifer, let all the other ones be put on the table, except for that parcel, 'cause that is a prime piece of land, best for the town.
I did take a look to address, if it's true, I did take a look at the available space in town.
Yep.
And unfortunately, a lot of it is in suburban side streets.
Yeah, I know.
I'm not gonna go something on Grove Street, Hill Street.
Yeah, no, I remember the list.
That is the lot that would ring all the bells.
I think we should address, like Jennifer said, all the other lots, except that one should be put aside, until the board and everybody finally comes to an agreement, what we're gonna do with it, and if people wanna buy the other parcels of this and that, they go up, fine. But that one piece should stay to the side, it shouldn't be addressed Saturday at all, it should be put to the side, I'm sorry.
And Mike, like I said, go ahead, Jennifer.
I agree with you, John.
That's it, I'm sure.
That's it?
Yes.
And like I said, let's reiterate one thing.
That's just the beginning of my list.
And I appreciate what you said, but the goal, as a director from Police to Fire, is ways to save money, and that's, I mean, I got a hit on that lease again. I mean, if...
That's a huge issue.
If I know the town's gonna pay me $30,000 a year in the future, I'll build a two-story garage somewhere, and you could pay me $30,000.
And you know what, I've said this about the chief prior to you, and, you know, back to the 90s when I was sitting at this table, I don't, and I don't, I'm not putting fault or saying you're wrong, I'm just saying that, that's, this is your job, you're supposed to bring us this, and then we are supposed to...
Exactly.
Kind of critique it.
Exactly.
You know, objectively, objectively. So I just, I don't want you to think it's something, you know...
No.
I just wanna make sure that our whole town is taken care of, and I agree, John, I think that parcel needs to stay within the town, I just think we've gotta make sure that we have a thorough discussion as to the purpose and needs.
That's why I'm saying...
And the need of the whole town.
Leave that alone for right now, if we have our side, that needs to be tabled for now, until further, until the board discusses, the town discusses, this and that. I don't even want the town to have anything to say about bidding on it, or they're interested or anything like that, to say it's not up for anything right now, it's, we're holding on to it.
But wouldn't there be any interest to put an article on the warrant, for a current warrant, to get this project off the road?
I personally think it should be put in front of the people of Millville, for the best interest, and see what the people of Millville have to say about it.
That's what I would, that's what I would say.
Because basically, the people in Millville run this town, so if they think it's a good thing, and they approve it, then fine. If they say, well, we have a lot of questions, and we're not too sure about it, we have reservations about certain things, then we have meetings.
I almost have to disagree with you, John, I'd have to say that, once we, I think, this is no, well, I am in a F and T town meeting, people stack the meeting, I've, you see it, they stack the meeting.
Absolutely.
I think we need a plan for that parcel.
Yeah.
We need a plan for the parcel. I'm not saying we should put this on, I'm saying, we need, probably need to do something with that lot, whether it's this year, next year, get some money, you know, yes, there is a purpose, and I agree that, and I agree, Station Two needs to have bays. We are in agreement with that, we need to have our bays, I believe that. But I also believe that we need to make sure we have a full plan of what this town's gonna look like in 10 years. What is this building gonna look like, that building over there? We need to know what our buildings are gonna look like, and then formulate a plan on how, which, where are we gonna sink the money? Are we gonna sink it in here, fix this up, and do fire, police over there? You know, we need to know where we're going and what we're doing. So I wouldn't put an individual, I would never vote for an individual article on the warrant, unless we had a full comprehensive plan of all of our town buildings, and where they are going, and what's going on.
I disagree. I disagree wholeheartedly.
I mean, there's no reason you can't, that's just a preliminary drawing.
Right, that, this is all, baby.
You could put municipal offices on another floor.
If I see that a true interest, interest in a plan such as this, we can do, you know...
Just for like...
Quantitative analysis, we can do a lot to really give you hard numbers and take a good look, but if there's, but if you're gonna wait, you know, till you get a complete comprehensive examination of all town buildings, you'll probably retire by the time that happens.
I think we know which ones need fixing up. We know where the septic's needed, we know where the roof is needed, we know where, we know where the program spots up, and I think we have to look at our use, our building use.
He knows how to pay for his.
But if we can make a fire municipality building, right there, you add a floor to that, you've got your municipal offices.
You got some more...
A lot of towns do, in other words, this is a small town, just off the top of my head, 'cause I was there this weekend, it's Lakeville, you have, you have the fire station, municipal offices, one building directly across the street is police.
Well, Blackstone has it.
You know, I mean, granted, we don't have ocean spray as a resident in town, but I mean...
As a sponsor.
Yeah, but it's definitely more cost-effective to use one building to, you know...
That's why, you know...
And the heat, you're gonna save...
And that's why I asked what the frontage was.
Two antiquated buildings that were heating...
Right.
Versus a brand-new.
Well, see, that's what I meant, you're doing it in phases, so what I was saying, Jennifer, is this, if the town approves, for instance, the fire station on number one, and all of a sudden, like you said, the town halls, this and that, we need to move it, we need to do something to update our thing, now all of a sudden, we add a piece of that, and that's where the town hall is, and certain things, and this and that. So now we have two things over there, and then the Highway Department, we up in the corner, deal with, he had to do. But it's a piece of property where we can expand, and not just put the Fire Department there, we could put other entities in there, besides that, and I think that's what the chief is saying. It's not just for fire, it's for, you know, fire and whatever we need to do with it. But I don't think we should sit too long on this, I think because of costs and things like that, but the other thing is, is paying this guy this kind of money every year, we need to do something, we need to do something fast, because if we don't, it's just gonna lay, and I understand a long-term plan of this and all that, we're gonna start dragging it again. And the thing is, is I see what his phases are, and I see exactly what he wants to do, but there's also things in there that we can do to change that. Like, it doesn't have to be all Fire Department, it could be Fire Department and Town Hall.
Yep, that's right.
And I think that would be a good thing, we have that levy to do that.
If I will, John, that Phase One simply makes it affordable. I had someone say to me, chief, why don't you go for the whole thing? I said, listen, we, our tax base and our levy does not justify or support any type of building, and if we're gonna, we're not gonna find the money anywhere else. So if you say, let's wait and build a million-dollar complex, we're never gonna build a million-dollar complex, let's be straight up, we don't have the money or the ability to generate...
Then we just need to know who belongs over there, because once you tie other pieces of your municipal entities in, your chances of getting a grant increases, if those are those types of, usually those types are out there, you know, if you're integrating different town departments to...
Do you identify another alternative for a fire station in town, that would meet all the needs that that lot supplies?
No, I agree, I, no, I agree about a bed.
I mean, about the...
But I, before we go and pay for, and plot the, not plot, but place a bay down, I wanna make sure it's situated in a spot that's gonna be conducive to whatever the future plan is.
And that's why, that particular drawing, what's unique about that lot is the availability to travel on Main Street and Chestnut Hill, that's really...
Well, that corner on Chestnut Hill would be a little tricky.
That is so, we look at it pretty good, throw that back.
Pulling out at the main exit.
But we'd be as close to the cemetery as we possibly could, so we leave all the land going west for development. So you're speaking 40 feet, you're speaking over 160 feet of available footage to build on, if you go 10 feet off a property line, you still have 150 feet of footage.
That could be made very safe accessibility, just by installing a traffic light for fire vehicles.
You could do whatever, it's, the bottom line is, if you take a look at the station...
You're gonna need all the visibility, all that stuff.
Never mind Station Two, if you take a look at Station One, Station One backing into the firehouse in this day and age on Main Street is just a mistake. No one would ever build a fire station where that one is today.
Because we've had numerous issues over the years, of almost getting clipped, backing Almost getting clipped, backing in, whether it's the vehicles, almost getting clipped because people don't want to wait. They want to go and get to their destination. And we've had people drive up onto the rent to go around vehicles. Had people walk on the sidewalk on the other side before the new sidewalk was in, where it was a little lower, to get around, almost hitting our personnel. It's backing in, like the chief just said, is that's, that's so far ago. Where most, most stations now are all drive-through. We just drag around, you just go backing up.
What we can do is, we can just-
Don't have to worry about-
Keep all the information, gather a little bit more. And when the board's looking at its time, if you could really start to analyze what we have and what direction we'd like to go into, go to. To be frank with you, you know, we have a busy schedule as it is. I'm not gonna spend countless hours and hours on a project such as this with no future in sight. I mean, I've got better things to do for the town than to crunch numbers and try to build something that I know it's not gonna come to fruition. I just don't have that type of time. If I, I know there's sincere interest down the road, then I certainly will to put all the time into it and do the legwork.
Have you talked to any of the people on finance or is this your first stop?
That's my first stop.
So like Marilyn has been talked to?
This is, I've just self, I've just self-educated myself. I'm pretty good with finances and like I said, the bond and the way to pay the bond is through our lease program that we're paying and some, I think Marilyn's gonna agree on, you know, one way or another, debt exclusion or a bond. I don't think there's any other way to do it unless someone donates a lot of money to the town. I don't think we have it in the general funds. So I think that is the only workable opportunity. Well, it's just a vision we have.
Yep.
No offense, if you're not supportive of it, we just move on to the next vision that we have.
It's not a matter of not knowing.
But I just don't like, I just don't like writing that voucher every quarter and paying that rent with no control and absolutely no value.
No, we're throwing money away.
We're just throwing money away with that.
First thing, first of all, I applaud all your effort, input in this. It's forward thinking. And I disagree with Jennifer in that, you know, if you get something identified, you can tackle it, you can do it, you can't wait until you get the whole pie. That, that, that's very visible, that's doable, and that shouldn't detract from any other development in the town.
Absolutely not.
Can we probably schedule another meeting down the road to discuss it?
We may just want to mention that the chief will be at the meeting on Saturday, the fourteenth. So if anybody watching has questions regarding his proposal, they can certainly come-
I'd love to entertain any questions someone may have. I may be overlooking something. I mean, I've thought everything out, I did spend a lot of time. And I try to simplify things rather than just speak, you know, continuously for twenty minutes and then you forget what I say. I generally like to put things down, we can visualize them and see. There's other tools that we can present that will make it that much longer, an argument that we should go forward.
Another thing I, I think we also need to be cognizant of is, in addition to the financial issues with the lease, is we don't know that we'll always have the ability to maintain that lease, should the owner sell that property.
That's the other thing I heard.
And thank you for that.
In three years, you know, we'll have equipment that we can't house.
Thank you, because if something happened, you're right. We can't keep the equipment outside. It freezes, it's full of water. So I agree, Helen, thank you so much.
Also, the thing about is the age of the building. That building is really old. And if it becomes a time where maybe it's not feasible for him to maintain it anymore and doesn't want it anymore, then what do we do? You know, three, five years down the road, all of a sudden, we don't have a garage because it's falling apart and, and the owner doesn't want to fix it. Now we're, now we're looking for a place to store our vehicles and, and our other equipment that's up there.
So if anyone has any additional questions or thoughts, feel free to contact me, maybe I'm overlooking something. But it's just, any good director will give you a plan.
What was discussed tonight, I, I'd like to make a motion to the board that we hold that piece of land, Chestnut Hill Road, Main Street, till further notice, till we find out which direction we're gonna go. And it's not gonna be put on the market for the public or be sold at this time.
That, that's never a thought. That was not-
No, well, this came up because the parcel on the corner of Main Street was asked for a switch and I think this is how it all kind of started.
The board would have to vote to authorize anything be done with it. So you don't really need to vote to not do anything with it. You know what I mean?
Yeah, but I don't want to put on-
John seconded his motion to a discussion.
I, I don't want the thing to be put on the market or be discussed, period, in public.
I think that's the property we tried to auction a couple of years ago.
We did.
And there was no interest in it.
And now, now because we have a plan, now there's an interest.
Of course.
So I want to protect the interest, is what I'm trying to do.
Right.
Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Put the motion on the floor.
Put the motion.
All right, so, well, just, I don't, I don't-
If the board, if the board tomorrow were to vote to do something with it, it negates the motion, right? You have to vote to do something with the-
But I don't think we need to even do that because we have to vote, put it to auction to begin with. So, anyway, so, any further discussion on that?
John, parts in the right place, they should make sure this is-
Yeah, I understand his-
I'm with you, yeah, I'm with you. I'm with you. But, so.
All right, so all in favor?
Aye. Hold it to the town. Status quo.
Action comes up, this one is a-
Thank you.
Okay, so now at seven twenty-eight, we're gonna open our seven o'clock meeting. So would everyone please join us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and with equal liberty and justice for all.
Any announcements? No? I don't have any.
Yes, you have that.
Nope, I do not. Approval of minutes and warrants, August nineteenth, two thousand thirteen, at seven PM. And I believe all were present. I'm gonna make the motion to accept the minutes for August nineteenth at seven PM.
I'll second your motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second, we have minutes from August twenty-sixth, two thousand thirteen, at six thirty PM. All were present, except Bob, Bob Baker and John Laura were absent. So I'm looking for a motion.
Make a motion, we accept the minutes as written.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will just let the board know that the minutes of the August twenty-sixth meeting, part of the record are all the documentation that was provided. So the minutes may look a little bit minimal, but I think the documentation explains much of what was discussed.
Yep. Okay, no reports of town officials tonight. First public forum. Correspondence, no correspondence tonight. No appointments, resignations. Executive secretaries report?
I'm actually gonna hold on providing you an update this evening. There are so many ongoing things within the building-
Okay.
-that I think it warrants waiting a little longer to get some more results of things that have taken place over the past week or so.
Okay. Any old business?
Can I just ask that if something comes up, just maybe a possible email?
Sure.
As things kind of conclude or you have information.
Okay. Any old business? I don't have any. New business? We have a special town meeting?
I've narrowed it down to two dates for the board. We're looking at either Monday, November eighteenth, or Monday, December sixteenth.
Can I suggest the November date? Because I found that the closer we get to the holidays, the less people we've had.
Yeah.
Yeah, that happened one year, we were pretty close to Christmas.
Yeah, it was like the first week or so.
We had to call the meeting.
If it's on the eighteenth, when will you open the warrants?
I will, if you vote to do it the eighteenth, the warrants would be open effective immediately and then I'll send the warrant schedule out to the entire, all the town departments within.
Probably close around the first. Well, it has to be posted about the first.
Yeah, probably October.
Ten days.
Yeah, I would say- I'll make a motion for November eighteenth.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then we have the Maya Town Trust contract, Health Trust contract.
This is due to recent updates in the HIPAA laws. Maya is now requiring a business agreement with the town of Millville. So I would just need a motion for the board to sign the business associate agreement with the Maya Health Benefits Trust.
Is town council renewed it?
No, I did not run this by town council. It's a standard contract. I can certainly do that, but I tend to think you-
It probably went through Maya's, right? And seeing their Millville, their paras. Yeah. I make a motion to accept the Maya Health Trust contract.
I'll second that. Any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Members' forum?
Yes. I would like to know, based upon our meeting tonight with the police chief, if we could email all the departments, ask them, those who house a business, so the fire, the police, the library, the senior center, any projected, I know we can't, you know, like, projected possible expenditures that are gonna be needed over the next ten years, whether it's a new roof. I mean, we know the senior center's good, but our library is, you know, the septic, there's been issues there. For this building, I know we can only kind of bullet. And I don't need something formal, I don't need estimates, I don't need anything. What are the possible occurrences in the building, maintenance-wise, that are foreseen?
We can certainly do that. I will bring to your attention, the capital planning committee did do just that last year.